Three o'clock, we can get started with the Beltrami County Work Meeting. And first on the agenda is call meeting to order. Introduction of new employees. Do we have any new employees?
Commissioner. Shane Beston County Bestion Service Officer. I'm here to introduce Uplowski, the new Assistant County Bestion Service Officer. He's been with us now since April 23rd was his first day. He just went through a week of intensive training with Scotty. He came in and helped get him dive into every aspect of what we do. So that's what he's been doing. National Guard member, he's no longer serving. Seven years National Guard and recently came back from Africa from a long deployment, twelve month deployment. So very happy to have him on board and there's no shortage of work, that's for sure.
Can you give a brief description of who you are, where you're from and?
Yeah, so I mean, I grew up in Minneapolis, outside of Minneapolis, but moved up to Bemidji with my wife. Been here for about six years now, just under six years. Love Bemidji, love the area, really, really big outdoorsman, so kind of fits in really well. Everyone's an outdoorsman. But like you said, National Guard, deployed to East Africa. At that point, I wasn't in Bemidji. Anything, I'm even more encouraged, so.
Welcome. Yeah, thanks for coming. Thank you.
Are there any other new employees? Seeing none, we will move on to item four, election security.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So today I am here to talk about election security. It is the start of the 22 election cycle. So I thought I'd give a little talk on, on items that were of concern through our last election and a little introduction of some of the election team that we have. So to start with, we have, based out of the License Center, we have Leela Roth and Kelly Primus. And then based out of our payroll department, we have Danielle Johnson, Kaylee Rizinski and Danielle Johnson. And they're based out of payroll, myself and then Samantha Rux. We all take part in, in elections as county employees. And then we also have some temporary employees come in and election judges come in. So this year we will have two temporary employees that will work from January through December, working on our absentee process and filling bags for election supplies, testing equipment, going through all of those processes. We will have two election judges putting together absentee packets to mail out to everyone that's requested an absentee ballot. We'll have four election judges to do the absentee processing checking in. So they will check to make sure that all of the steps have been completed and verify those absentee ballot or envelope against the application that they put in. And then lastly, we'll have six judges help with tabulation on election night. So that's kind of our, our election team for going into this election cycle that we're in right now. And then the, one of the other items that has really been talked about in the news is election security. So I just wanted to touch on election security a little bit. Since there has been this increase in electronic tabulation machines, I want to just let you know that the basis for all elections in Minnesota is a paper ballot. So if something happens to the machines, if we have to do a recount, we are able to take that paper ballot and recreate the results of our election. That's actually what we, we did that in 2018 with the State Representative District 5A race. I believe it was with Bliss and Purcell. We went through a recount. We were the central counting area. We had Cass County, I task Hubbard bring their ballots here. And we counted, spent the day and counted 17,000 ballots by hand to confirm that, that race results. So although we are turning to more electronic processing, our basis always is the paper ballot. So for electronic processing, we contract with a company out of Omaha, Nebraska. And they are called ESNS, Election System and Software. So pictured on the screen is the DS450, and that's a tabulation machine that we use to tabulate all of our absentee ballots. It's a very high-speed machine and can go through those ballots very quickly. I believe in the last election, we were about 50% absentee mail ballot. So about 50% of the votes that came through Beltrami County were counted on one of those machines. At the poll sites, we have a smaller self or the voter feeds in the ballot machine called a DS200. And as the voter votes the ballot at the poll site, they can go put the ballot into the tabulator. If there is an issue with it, with the ballot, the tabulator will say you've had an overvote or you, your ballot is blank, and then the voter can request what, what results they, or what, how they want to correct that. Once the ballot has been accepted, it drops down into a secure ballot box that's locked until the end of the evening. We also have assisted voting devices that are through ESNS. And then the company that we use out of St. Cloud area called Sea Change does our ballot design and machine programming. So for our ballots, Sea Change polls, when someone comes in and files for office, that information, we take off of your affidavit candidacy and we upload that to the state's election registration system. And, and the Sea Change pulls all of that information off ERS to create their ballots. And that's what we're in the process of doing right now. We're working with Sea Change to get our ballot layout, to make sure the correct candidates are on the ballot and make sure the correct races are on the ballot. They print our sample ballots for us. Our county staff proofs those sample ballots. And Sea Change also puts together a test deck for us. You'll see later on, we go through a very extensive testing of all of the programming and the ballots. And so they, they do a test deck that makes sure every candidate has a test vote for every race. For the equipment programming, we, our equipment is programmed through little jump drives. So the jump drives are programmed for the tabulation machines to read each ballot style. So a certain tabulation jump drive reads that ballot style. So that's what would go out to the, the precincts on election night. Or if we're using the bigger machines for absentee ballots, that could then have all of the different ballot styles on it. Chips for the assisted voting devices are programmed. And then again, county staff proofs all of those chips and all of those jump drives. So like I said, we go through a very extensive testing of our voting equipment. The first round is done as soon as we get those ballots printed and as soon as we get the machine programmed. So we start and we will run, we'll get that pre-marked test deck for each precinct and we will feed a ballot through that precinct's machine. So every machine is tested, every candidate is tested. Once the machine, or once the ballots are fed through the machines, the votes are recorded on those jump drives and then the ballot then drops down into that secure ballot box. The, the jump drive then is totaled and machine tapes are run off of all of those ballots that have gone through the jump drive. We take those machine tape totals and we balance that against the test deck Excel spreadsheet. So we will have, we will know what each vote count should be for each candidate. We proof those two against each other. Then once that is correct, we take our jump drive. We put it into a standalone computer to encrypt those results. Once encrypted, we download those results or we save those results on a clean jump drive. And then that is uploaded to the state's site, which then pushes it out to the state's result site. And once our testing is complete, once all the process is complete, we take the results that are on the state's site and we proof that back against our very first Excel spreadsheet to make sure that everything did go through clearly. Once, once we have gone off through all of that and we're, we're satisfied that we're 100% accurate with what the jump drives are reading off the machines and 100% uploading to the state, we then take those jump drives, we seal them into each machine with a numbered seal and then we save that in our locked, store them in our locked storage area. For our second round of testing, it's not quite as extensive. We go through the process of the machine and we set them up down here in the boardroom and the public can come, they're invited to come and watch how, how the machines work, what the process is, answer questions for the public. So that's something to watch for coming up right before the election. Then on election day, we kind of go through the same process, but it does start with the absentee ballots. And as the absentee ballots come in, they're verified against the application. And we have two election judges accepting those ballots. So once all of the ballots have been accepted, we run them through the DS450, the big tabulation machine. The results tapes and the jump drives are then securely stored until we're ready to do that state upload. On election day at the poll sites, the polls close at 8:00 PM. The election judges run the tapes off of their machines, just like we did in testing. They take those tapes and they remove the jump drive and they place all of that in a sealed, secure envelope for transport. And then after they have everything balanced out, they pack up all of their machines and their supplies and they transport all of that equipment again back to here on election night, where it goes through a verification. So everything they processed that day is verified. And once it's all balanced out, then those jump drives can be loaded up to the, first they go through the encrypting, saving on a clean drive and then that gets uploaded to the state site. Once those are all uploaded, the, our county staff proofs the results that are on the state's site against those tapes that are printed off of that machine, just to verify that every vote in every precinct is correct and counted. Once the proofing is all complete, then we move along to the canvas board. The results are not official, not certified until the canvassing board certifies those results. The canvas board is made up of two commissioners, the auditor treasurer, the district court administrator, the representative from the largest city in your, or in our county, which is the city of Bemidji, and then one qualified voter. And at canvassing, we review the process. We kind of talk through the process. We review the machine results, so the tapes that come off the machines, and compare that to the state's results that are out on the website. And once the canvassing board is satisfied with all of that process, then they certify the election results as official. A few weeks later, then we do an audit of our results, which is called our post-election review. And what that is, is we randomly choose two precincts to hand count those paper ballots that I talked about. So we print off what the actual results are or the tabulation results from the machines. And we take and tally, hand count all of the ballots for that precinct, compare that to what was, what the tabulators calculated, just to make sure that those are, are correct. And again, the public is invited to attend this process as well. And I think that's about all I have. So just with all of these safeguards and processes that we have before, during and after the election, we just really, we feel those are, are put in place to have a safe, secure and accurate election for Beltrami County. So with that, I will answer any questions for you. I do have an, an article in the newsletter with the same information. Is that going out this week? So what I have is what my newsletter article is, just so that you have this information and if you have any questions. So with that, I will answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, so Jody, do you, do you do this just for the general election or do you do it for the primary and the general election?
We do this for every election. So the primary and the general on the, the election, state election cycle years. We also do it for any special elections, the township elections. We go through a more abbreviated process, but the townships that have a population that they have to have the machines at, we go through that same process as well.
Okay. And most of the security stuff that you talked about deals with counting of the ballots. How about the security of, like, are there ballot drop boxes and are, do we have cameras on those? Are there, what, what kind of security is there in, in, you know, that piece of it, the actual, you know, handling of the ballots and, and, you know, that, that part of it?
Sure. So to start with, every time ballots are transported, there needs to be two election judges of, of two separate parties. So we always have party balance when any, when the ballots are transported, when anyone has to open the ballot box to pull the ballots out, we always have that party balance. As far as drop boxes, drop boxes is a relatively new idea that has just started with the pandemic in 2020, where the state has allowed counties, if they choose to have drop boxes, but those drop boxes have to have surveillance cameras on them 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That's a process that we have decided, we have opted not to do. We do have a ballot box that is up in our office, right outside, right outside the window of our office upstairs, that we have staff at the counter all of the time. So we have a manned ballot box versus having a surveillance drop box.
Mr. Chair, when do the ballots go, go out this year as far as for the absentee or for those that want just a mail-in ballot?
Sure. Absentee voting starts June 24th. And next week, I believe we are starting to work on getting those labels all ready for the, the application to go out to people who are permanently registered absentee voters. So they will get the application to send back in. We have a handful of those, about 30 voters. At that point, that when they send their, their application for an absentee back in, on the 24th, when absentee balloting opens, we can then send them their ballot, their actual ballot that they can send back to us. As far as mail ballot precincts, I believe that's, that they are scheduled to go out, I believe it is mid-July. The week of July 1st, this is why I have my election team here. So we have those scheduled to out the week of July 1st and they actually get mailed from a, we resource with a vendor. We have a contract with a vendor that sends out all of those mail ballots for us.
Thank you. You're good.
All right. I don't think I have any questions either, and if I do, I'll, I'll reach out.
Okay. Thank you so much for allowing me to share this. I have shared this presentation. It's, it's available for me to share with any kind of organizations that you think might benefit from it. I've shared it with the League of Women Voters and I have another different organization coming up next week that I'll be sharing the same presentation. So if there's anyone that you think would be, would benefit from it, any organization, just let me know and I will get in touch with them.
Thank you, Jordy. We're, just want to remind folks that we have an additional work session agenda bill. And for, we will be discussing that right after the juvenile diversion program, so.
Hello, I'm Wendy Thompson. I'm the Director at Beltrami Area Service Collaborative. I've spoken in front of this body a few different times about different programs and about just the general work that we do. We've had a longstanding partnership with the county to provide what's a statutorily required program. And I think what we've developed here with our partners in Beltrami County is very robust and it's proven to be very effective. And so we hope to continue doing that for many years. I'll give you a little background on that. Now I can forward this, right? Okay. So if you're not familiar, just as a reminder, Beltrami Area Service Collaborative typically goes by BASK. We are a children's mental health and family service collaborative and our parameters are dictated by statute. They were created around the mid-1990s and there are 90 or so collaboratives across the state of Minnesota, all a little different from one to the next. We have chosen to get involved in some direct service programming. We are a joint powers entity, so we are separate from the county, but the county does have representation. Richard has served on our board for quite some time. And then we also, at this time, have Lisa Monzrud, who is the supervisor for the Children's Unit and Social Services on our board as well.
And forgive me, Mr. Chair, but, and we also contribute to the funds to the, to BASK. Am I correct there?
Yes, yes. Social Services contributes $80,000 toward our programs that we, that we fund in the community. And then also, I believe, a $40,000 partner contribution toward BASK through the Social Services budget. So we provide direct services. We're going to talk today about our diversion program. And then we also do, we have staff that are in the schools who do school re-engagement, which is actually, you know, the red flag of truancy of other things happening with those kids. We also provide program funding. We vet different programs to make sure that they match our mission and goals. Those are some of the recipients of our funding each year. And then we bridge and leverage partnerships. So we, in our mission and focus areas, if we see people who need to sit down and, and talk through things that are happening with systems, with families and kids, we try to get people together and do the best we can to partner on that. So we use our resources as well. So as far as the diversion program, I wanted to explain our funding. We, as I said, it's a statutorily required program in Minnesota. From, for about six years, we received funding from the Department of Public Service in their Office of Justice Programs area. They had a significant gap in their funding round as they did some restructuring. And so we weren't able to get funding from them and very little notice on when it might be coming around again. They still, I think it's been two years of a break that they've had with COVID. So we, we got into the grant pool again and went for some grants. We got a youth intervention program grant. And then thankfully, some ARPA funding that came through the county. Very pleased with that. That has helped us continue on with this program. And as you'll see by our numbers, very much needed the diversion program in our county. To talk a little bit more specific about our program, I'm going to turn it over to Brianna Hurlbert, who is our Intervention Program Specialist. She carries with her a lot of experience working with families and kids that we have really benefited from as things have ramped up a little bit with behaviors and things with kids during these COVID times. So I'm, I'm really pleased that we've got her. She holds kids accountable, builds trust and relationship with schools and law enforcement and our county attorney's office. So really pleased to have her. So I'll turn it over to Brianna.
Good afternoon. Like Wendy said, I'm Brianna Hurlbert and I'm the Intervention Program Specialist for BASK. We have some primary partners that we work with that I check in with quite frequently also, which one would be the Beltrami County Attorney's Office, David sitting here next to me. We also work with County Social Services, the Department of Corrections through Bemidji and law enforcement, Beltrami County and the city of Bemidji. So why do we use diversion programs? Youth, we find that youth who are adjudicated in court tend to reoffend at higher rates than those who are not formally prosecuted. 75% of juvenile crime is the lower level or status offenses such as minor consume, vaping. 25% of juvenile, juvenile crime is more of the serious or violent, fifth degree assaults, disorderly conducts. So our goal is to redirect youthful offenders from the justice system and not introduce it to them. So are cases diverted versus filed in court? We're looking at a time period of August 2021, March 2022. And the reason why we picked that time period is that I came on in this position back in June of last 2021. And then Robert Anger, who is our juvenile county attorney, came on in August 2021. So that was kind of when we were catching up with the COVID backlog and getting into a swing of things with one another. So at, during that time from August till the end of March of this year, we had 102 cases referred to diversion programming and 166 cases were filed in court. Numbers during this period might be a little slightly inflated from previous years because of staffing changes, myself and Robert. um, Robert, and then the backlog due to COVID. So during that time period, here's a graph of the different types of cases that did come through. Um, you can see our top three were disorderly conducts, fifth degree assaults, and the vaping and tobacco in school. Uh, the vaping and tobacco came through pretty quick at the beginning of the school year this year, and we knew from our partners that it was an issue. So we did team up with Sanford Health and created an anti-vaping campaign with an info board, some examples, a lot of information, and we went through the different schools in Beltrami County. We were at parent teacher conferences, we were at sporting events. Um, anything else that they invited us to come to, to kind of get the word out what parents were looking for and, um, make aware of the dangers of vaping.
Brianna?
Yeah.
Um, I know, uh, a couple of years back, you know, the county board approved the, um, the, the, the 21, yeah. Is, is there, do you have any sort of, uh, statistics prior to that? And then, you know, I guess, to, to compare to today to see if, if that campaign has really helped any, or, or?
I don't today, but I could definitely get them. Yeah, the beginning there was pretty bad. Um, it, it was the worst that the schools have seen was this beginning of the school year, end of last school year. So we did with Sanford Health, they were able to put in even some, um, anti-vaping detectors out at the middle school, which has helped quite a bit. Uh, we're finding that with vaping and actual tobacco use, it's such a difference because with the vaping, there's no smell. It's very easy to conceal and be doing wherever um, you're at. And so that was definitely a concern that it had gone up quite a bit.
Yeah, one of the concerns I had when, when we were discussing that was, you know, the, kids are going to find a way to, to do it regardless of, of, you know, the, the age requirement or not sizes.
Number two, yeah. Number one. They went into that, which I think prior to COVID. So they had very, very short. And COVID hit schools shut down. So we're going to have change of behavior too. Special measures have been solved. It might be less cigarettes, but they and old, a lot of these kids are home or not on campus. For, for times we were not catching up to the office, school. Back to school last school year.
So with the tobacco in school, is this just Bemidji, or, or does this include black?
This is Beltrami County in general. Yeah. Yeah, my number's here, and that's where we use the anti-vaping campaign. We did it for the whole county. Uh, here are the diverted traffic offenses that I got during this time. Number one being careless driving. Um, I'll explain a little bit more about what we do with some of these classes in a little bit. So in order to be eligible for the diversion programming, uh, juvenile has to have no prior convictions. It is a traffic status or delinquent offense, and it can range anywhere from a petty offense to a felony. The citation can come from any of our, um, officers or deputies in the county. Slow resource officers, the charges go to the county attorney's office, and, uh, the assistant county attorney, Robert Anger reviews the charges, checks for priors, determines if it's an appropriate case to go to diversion, and then chooses an appropriate diversion program, and then makes the referral over to my office.
Other than, when we're talking about, and this is in that, in this year period, um, we need to take a, a, a approach. Numbers are strong. We want to make sure it for the version. How we help individuals not start this and stay this. Y'all can say it comes down to what, uh, we have. We can, we can definitely.
So different programs that a juvenile can be referred to through me. The number one, or the top three on this chart are the ones that are most used, but the number one is a rescue force. Uh, restoration education skills changing you. It's an hour and a half class that juvenile and their guardian have to come to. It's meant to open a conversation between the two of them about risk factors that the, uh, juvenile has, any sort of behaviors, thoughts, looking at what are good and positive choices that they have in their life, and think ways that they can move forward so that they do not reoffend. Then we also have a traffic refresher class, which is an hour to hour and a half of basic traffic law. Again, the juvenile and their guardian must attend together. And then a more intensive alternative response case management for delinquency or what we call Arkham. This would be for some higher level offenses like fifth degree assaults, domestics. Um, they would be coming in with their guardian and opening a case for usually around four months with me. It's more, it's like a, more of a positive restorative probation, working on chemical dependency, mental health concerns, the schools. I go in and work with them in the schools. When we are in school, they come in and work with me, going through some of even some of the stuff we do in the rescue class. Uh, there's a sexting diversion program, restorative group conferencing, P circles, which we can do in the schools now again with COVID happening. And then, um, collaborative conferencing for our duly involved youths. Our duly involved youths are ones who have concurrent involvement with both the child welfare and juvenile justice system, so they are in court and are going to be looking at pro- probation at some point, and then they have a caseworker within the child welfare, welfare program. So it can be court ordered for me to facilitate a meeting. And it's a process that was developed as part of the Duly Involved Youth Project, which brings together the youth, family, case managers, probation agent, any equal workers, and any other identified parties to discuss and assess the current risks, needs and strengths of the youth and family. And it culminates with an agreement signed by all parties outlining possible conditions of probation. So it's really a time for us to sit down all together with the youth, so they, them and the family have a say in, uh, what are some great strengths that they have, and how can we support that, and what are the risks, and how can we address that with probation in a positive way? So one of the ways that we determine our success in diversion program is by recidivism. Um, recidivism is considered successful at the six-month rate, if it is 15% or lower, and the 12-month rate, if it's 25% or lower. So I put down our rates from March 2019 to March 2022. You see, we've been successful, minus one 12-month rate there in March 2022, but we are working with that COVID backlog and we were getting, because the courts were shut down and everybody was shut down, we might not have been able to work with those kiddos right when it happened, and so it was maybe a year out or a year and a half out before they got to come into programming. With juveniles, really need to get to them as fast as we can, which we have definitely rectified that problem, and we're getting citations through within at least a couple of weeks now, and, um, those into the programming within a bottom line.
Oh, my moving parts are apart.
Yeah. But we're getting through it. I think we've gotten back on track, so. Some other measure, measurements that I use in my program, I do a risk assessment, um, a mental health assessment, and then there's also a survey that the juvenile and their guardian do pre and post survey. So, um, we make sure that we really hit all aspects of these kiddos that are coming through to make sure that they are going to be as successful as they can be. I'd want to get through the programming.
How you first one five. Oh. Jail project. How much? Services aspect. Someone's evolved from justice system. There is cost. So if we can find well juvenile and say, how do we help prevent getting into that system? Classes, keep program, etc. We're going to save.
It's hard to quantify a cost that was never incurred, right? That's, yeah. Um, Mr. Chair, I have one question. Back when, I think it was the first summer that I was on the county board, so like six years ago, uh, we were discussing the JDAI, the Juvenile Detention, uh, Alternative Initiative that the, um, Annie CK, Annie C Casey Foundation, uh, puts on and made available to us, and one of my real regrets is that I didn't advocate more strongly to take part in that, and I'm just curious more from Wendy or from BASK, what you feel about that, if you feel that the JDAI is something that we should have or should now consider joining? And I just want to preface the question before you, just that, the, you know, we had a different administrator, we had a different, um, sheriff, we had a different, uh, county attorney. All of them uniformly agreed, and I think that at least once, but I think twice, the phrase was uttered, "We don't need a bunch of outsiders coming in and telling us how to run our county," which in retrospect just sounded like such a, uh, an old-fashioned way of looking at, at the world and at ourselves. And I wonder if we wouldn't have benefited from having, um, engaged, uh, the foundation and bringing the JDAI into, uh, Beltrami County.
So unfortunately, I wasn't, I was on the periphery of that conversation. I remember it happening, but I don't, I didn't, I was not at the table when they were discussing that, so hopefully if that comes up again, that would be something I would really like to participate in.
A, a lot of our neighboring counties do.
And I know that decision was made prior to coming to Beltrami County. I would want to open the
And, right, and I, I'm not saying in lieu of, or, or it'd be, I mean, I think that, I think we're doing a lot of really great things, but I'm just wondering if that wasn't a missed opportunity. It would have been no cost to us. There is no, um, no compulsion to, uh, agree with their, their decisions, but I think it just would have been another tool we would have had in our kit. I want to talk publicly on it.
It's a, it's not only agenda, so it's big conversation.
Yeah. Okay, but, but while we're here, I would love to have Wendy's, um, insight.
So I, my recollection is kind of vague as far as what that was. I, I'm, I always think it's positive for us to sit down as a community to address what's, um, our persistent issues, and I, it is juvenile, um, delinquency, correct? Is that what it focuses on? Okay.
Right, I mean.
Other sources of either consequence of litigation short of with the, I, you know, the idea of doing a line is something
Yeah, and and no doubt, I mean, we're doing a lot of the, of the things that would be suggested, I think, through the, through the JDAI, but.
Yeah, I, I think our probation system focused a lot of that.
Okay.
But I would, I would want just
Sure, yeah, maybe it's not a bad idea to, to, to re, to, to take a look at it with fresh eyes. We have new people, and I mean, maybe in the new year, when there will definitely be new people on the board, because, um, some of us will be gone. And, um, and, uh, and maybe with the new board, we could take another look at it.
Compliment you guys on, I was very impressed with the recidivism rate. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, and don't, please, I'm this, yeah, I agree with Craig. Craig's trying to make me look bad.
Thank you, thank you.
No, no, I, I just, I mean, I just, I, I absolutely support everything you guys do. I don't want to, I don't want to, uh, say, I don't want to take away from your, your, your presentation. It was very good, and Craig is right to compliment you.
This is above beyond what we have. We, we have a base level, but here, I don't think it comes that what we have to do, and because it better.
Maybe share a quick story? Would you be up for a story?
Okay, she prepared something she was gonna hear. I had, it, it was just one that showed how COVID really affected everybody, the kiddos this year, and I had a group of girls that came through, there were four of them, and they were in an area school, and they had been gotten into a pretty good fight at the beginning of the school year, and when I had each of them come in, they were in case management, they none of them could quite tell me why they were mad at each other. They had all been friends pre-COVID, and then they were at home, and they were online, and they were kind of jabbing at each other back and forth, and they got back in person, and they got into a fight, and they came in, and they were all like, starting to feel a little ashamed of themselves, let's say, went through everything. I was like, well, you know, it doesn't mean you can't be friends again. And, and I went to go schedule a meeting with each of them a couple of months later, and they're all on a mission trip together. And then they were on a team that went to state together, and for something, then I was like, well, there you go, like, now they just, they're fine, and they're like, we just, we never knew why we were mad at each other in the first place. And that's really what this is for. It's for those kids that, you know, they have that moment. I say it's a second chance, you made a mistake. We all do it, but let's learn from it and move on, so.
It sounds, sounds like a a great story and, and, uh, a good way to, to come back and reunite. You know, that, um, that makes me think of a question is like, how, how can we help others out there that, that don't necessarily need the services, but, you know, that they, you know, still feel the pressures of, of, you know, uh, I guess that everyday life of, of, you know, a teenager or, or things like that. I mean, how, how do we connect with them?
Well, I think, speaking on our behalf, we are looking at this summer, at ways that we can be in the schools more next year and do some free, um, prevention stuff to like, look at things like that, you know, the kids that wouldn't necessarily have a citation or have got through, but that, you know, we're definitely dealing with those teenage issues that we can work with them for.
Yeah, I, I have thirteen-year-old twins that, that would probably be a great candidate.
Wanted to just mention too, um, that through the ARC funding, you do have a line item that BASK will be putting toward professionals coming into the school. We're going to still need to evaluate this summer what that will involve, but we know that behaviors have been difficult, challenging this year, and so we're going to be talking to administrators during the summer a little bit about what that could be and how we could target that.
Mr. Chair, I just think it's important too that we, that we resist, you know, and, and again, I'm not saying by any means BASK, right? But it's a general, um, uh, kind of trend, uh, last 20 years or so across the country that I think we, we have to remember that, that kids make mistakes, they do things that are bad, you know, that they regret. But this because they're kids, not because they're criminals, and I do worry about a trend of kind of criminalizing childish behavior, you know, um, I mean, I, and Childish behavior, you know, I mean, I, and I know kids can be, can drive you mad, but it's because they're teenagers. And they're going through a lot of hormonal changes and growth and, and it's important that we give kids the space to screw up and not say that makes you a criminal. It just makes you fourteen, you know? And I, I think of my experience, I was, this may surprise you to hear, but I've been an outspoken person for most of my life. And when I was sixteen, seventeen, I knew pretty much everything and I wasn't afraid to let anyone know that. And there are a time or two where someone much larger than me disagreed with, with my comments and, and maybe was physical. And if we punished criminally everybody that ever punched me for, for getting myself punched, I don't think that that would be a real. Help for public safety, you know?
That is exactly. So the cases that are prosecuted are sent to diversion. The bits. And that doesn't get the number. Cases where we say, well, that wasn't, you know, we're not even going to send a diversion. We also choose to just not prosecute. And have those. But. Have those in. Questionarily chosen.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we will move on to Bruce. We have a late minute agenda item. We have an additional agenda bill here that was, that was brought forward today. So you, you will be up right after. Right after Becky.
Not that it's less valuable.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for letting me get in a last minute agenda bill. I wouldn't do it if it wasn't for a timeline issue. So over the last few weeks, you folks have approved some resolutions related to procurement for managed care organizations. And you made a commitment to Prime West being our primary managed care organization for SNBC, Seniors Plus and Children and Families. Last Friday, I got information from the state basically saying SNBC will be Prime West, but for Seniors Plus. They are recommending an additional provider and I'm still on a gag order, so I'm not sure what I can and can't say. But what there is as part of that letter was an opportunity to go to mediation with DHS. And there's a resolution in your packet basically recommending that. I think that part of the whole procurement process is for us to have a say in who provides that managed care. And through our county based purchasing, we have a statute that supports that. So I'm recommending that we go through with the mediation process. It also requests that we designate a person to receive all the information and I'm recommending that I be that person. And I already signed the conflict and all the confidentiality agreements to, to support that. So all I'm asking is to sign that resolution. And answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chair, I, I think it's important to explain that gag order that you are being, like normally when we think of a gag order, it's a judge that gives someone a gag order, right? And this gag order is placed on you by DHS, correct?
Correct.
So DHS has told.
That, but yes.
What's that?
I sign it, but yes.
Sure, but I mean, it was initiated by DHS saying that you as our staff cannot talk to us about things that are really important to the county. That you have to have a wall. I just think that it's, it's worth mentioning that that is, that is what's behind the gag order, that, that we cannot talk to one of our most important staff members about one of the most consequential things in our county. Because a state agency said so, not because a judge did, not because there's a law, but because DHS has said so. That's all.
Mr. Chair, are we looking to put this on the agenda to, for approval in tonight?
I would like to see it put on the.
On the consented.
Consent. Right. That, that sounds good, so before we do that, what's the cost to the colony?
Who's a direct cost to the county if, let's say we get another managed care organization? I think part of it is the county committed in two thousand eight to our partnership with Prime West. And there is a statute that supports county based purchasing and joint powers, which is, which is how we support that. I think it's just a change in our system. So at this point in time, there wouldn't be a financial cost. I think it might be some confusion to some of our constituents and it also would change our partnership with Prime West at some point.
And Mr. Chair, isn't it, isn't it possible though that we would have a need to increase staffing to be able to work with the two different plans?
So right now, there's, this decision would impact our Health and Human Services, our whole agency. Right now, we employ eleven people that support case management with Prime West. And we also provide all the eligibility work for all medical assistance, which is, this is a part of. So the knowledge base for our staff that do eligibility could change. People will get a letter basically stating these different plans and they might have some confusion about that. And as far as our case managers, the other provider that I am aware of does their own case management. So I could see there being some confusion as people pass maybe between two different plants. And those are all opinions.
So this is, this is just us approving it going to mediation.
Yes.
We don't really know for sure what's going to happen yet.
No, I do know that Prime West and some other managed care organizations have a lawsuit against the state right now.
All right.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Becky.
Hi, Bruce. Good afternoon. I've got three different items for you here. The first one is opportunity for a federal grant for some road projects. The new federal transportation bill that was passed has some additional monies for transportation. Counties will get some of it, there's a direct amount of money that goes to all the states and it filters on down to the districts and it filters on down to the counties. And so we'll see that funding. But the bill also made a whole bunch of other pots out there for these different grants. We've been looking at them and this one is the first one that we really would have some projects that would be eligible for. The rest of them, like for example, had to be a mega project, a hundred million dollars was the minimum size. So I mean, it was, they got a bunch of different pots out there. And this one's called the Safe Streets and Roads For All. And it is really for safety type projects. The first part of the grant is for the plan, you know, the entity has to have a plan. So the grant can help you write the plan, but we already have our coming out safety plan. So Minnesota counties are kind of a step ahead with that. So then we can now go to the next step, which would be applying for actual construction dollars. And so I have not looked, I got into the application process yet, but looking at the criteria, which I provided there in the summary. But looking at the criteria, we do have some projects that could be eligible for this grant. And that are current projects in our five year plan. And I plan to submit some applications for it and see if we can get some federal funding to help offset some of those costs. And so I had listed them there, the projects, existing projects in our five year plan would be our project next year. Again, depending on timing, but the project next year on urban on Casoff fifteen. The future project on twenty, on the north side of the lake, it's a twenty-four project. Would be a potential one we could apply for. We have a project on twenty-one Bemidji Avenue from in town going up to Anne Street and twenty-four. That one there, we're working with the city, they're actually. Potentially looking to expand the scope and so that expanded scope would be eligible in this. Grant. And then the other project, again, depending on the scope and how it is, the application is worded, but the project we have in twenty-six. Out on Casoff twenty-two, those are existing projects that we have in our five year plan. It comes down to the, this grant, again, it's safety, but it, I was looking at projects where they are. Low cost, high value that we've been doing, but also kind of expands it out. And any time that we're. Looking at a, they call it a complete street. So you take a roadway and now you're also looking at the bicyclists, pedestrians. And so if you can accommodate all users, make it safer is a type of product, a very common type of project that I see that could fit with this grant. Another one. Is the shoulder widening. So that's when I get into the next category of projects. That are not in our five year plan. And I guess what I'm here is to get some consensus from the board if I get into these applications, if I can submit applications for these other projects that potentially could fit into this grant. But that is the. There's three shoulder widening projects on five, fifteen and thirty. These are projects that we will have resurfaced here not too long ago. They're narrow roads, not much for shoulders. And so one of the types of safety projects. This grant covers is a shoulder widening, so we go out there and add two, four foot shoulder, I'm not sure, some type of shoulder out there. But it's something that we need to do, should be doing, just don't have the money for it. So potentially if we can get a grant to help cover those costs, I thought would be a good opportunity for us. And the fourth one there is the reconstruction of fifty-two, that's Anne Street. It's another project that is, you know, a future project that is needed. That is a very busy corridor for us, the future section is probably going to be a curb and gutter urban section. Potentially a center left turn lane sidewalk or a trail or something, but it's going to be a, it's going to be more of an urban section in the future. And if it fits the criteria of this grant, I guess, again, I see it as another opportunity to potentially get a large chunk of that paid for. So I guess I'm hoping the board will, at this point, just support me spending some time on the application process. I haven't gotten into it, I'm not sure if there's a, you know, a resolution of support that is needed. But at this time, I just, I'm looking for some direction if it's okay to spend some time on those applications that are outside of the five.
Mr. Chair. As far as I'm concerned, this is something, it's very similar to when we put in for the tat, one half of one percent sales tax. You, you have a list of, of I, of areas that need improvement and, and money goes there. Even though in one year you might get three of the fifteen or twenty done. And to me, the, this would follow the same type of scenario?
Well, priority wise, ones that are in the plan. You know, I would do those first and then the, the next ones would be the next priority to work on. I guess I'm not sure that answers the question, but I mean, we, those four projects in the bottom are not on a list, they're not in a. Plan right now, but I'm hoping that there's support to do that.
I would like to see support, for example, number five. When we were doing five, we actually took a, went up the road and there were trees that probably should have come down and, and different curves that should have been straightened out. Because of lack of funds, we went ahead and did just the, the requirements that we had to do to make that road safer. But it certainly would benefit by having wider shoulders put back on some of those areas. To protect people if they come off the tar a bit. So I would, I would support the fact of even though they're not on the, the list, that they could still use that safety. Improvement as well as any of the others.
Mr. Chair. Bruce, do you have any clue as to if there's going to be a match required for these grants or if they would cover the entire cost? What our exposure as a colony would be financially if we do apply for these? Are we going to end up having to, you know, get twenty-five percent grant and seventy-five percent out of our coffers? And or where, where is the money position going to be at it? Do you have any idea?
Usually these are a ninety-ten, so we need a ten percent match. Sometimes it's twenty percent, I guess I, I assumed it was the ninety-ten.
And, Mr. Chair, I, I. Curious when I saw the shoulder widening, what are the chances that you can slip nine in there?
You, it's a good thing you say it as an outgoing.
But I mean, that's if we could, that would, that would make a lot of people happy if we could put a couple feet on either, either shoulder.
Yeah, I, I just had a constituent tell me that there's no box that's got hit for the ninth time.
Could that ten percent that you're asking about, could that come from sales tax or is it, or not?
Yes, the, the match funds would either be county stated construction funds or our sales tax funds. It's, it's flexible on our end with the match, matches. I mean, the, the best. Situation is, you know, these projects in the first category that are already in our five year plan, if we were to get one of those funded. Free up some dollars, if we were to get another project off the list funded, you know, we would have. Additional dollars there to help cover those match funds.
That's what I'm hoping for is that we would not end up doing something that isn't not needed. But I would rather see it going to, to, you know, improving some of the roads that, especially after this year, they just seem to be really in top shape. Some of the potholes are big vicious and, and, you know, I don't want to detract from fixing some of the, the roads. But if we can free up some of the money that we already have slated for some of these and, and it's a win-win, so I would be supportive of it.
Yeah, I, I don't see myself, you know, submitting whatever, seven applications, you know, right away in one year. That's the really simple and easy, which I doubt, but again, priorities at the top, but as I'm going through them. Thinking of the criteria, I was thinking of the bottom ones and as I get into the process, I'll, I'll see how it goes, but.
Be nice to know what that ratio is too, but. You know, if it is a theme, the way that you mentioned where we have some money slated for it anyways and we can get, even if it's eighty percent of it. So if you use for something else, that's, that's a win.
It is. And I will pencil that other road at the bottom of the list.
Thank you. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't at least ask.
Okay, the next item I have.
He was just asking for a nod.
Just a nod, yeah, I don't need anything for this time. Again, I expect that there's going to be a need for a resolution of support or something like that.
Okay.
So at this point, it's just my. So the next item is an update on our project that we have on Urban Avenue next year. I'm going to provide the board an update on this, we have hired more engineering, they're a local engineering firm. They have Stonebrook Engineering as a sub consultant to help with the intersection design. We have, they have put together some options for the corridor, options for the intersection. We had. A couple of opportunities for the public, the first one was a specific group of the public. We met with landowners, you know, adjacent or right nearby to the Anne and Urban intersection. And say we're going to be the most impacted by whatever we do there. I had a meeting with them, got some great input, actually made some changes to our design, to our options. So most changes were then given out at the, sorry, the new designs were given out, shown at the public hearing that we had. We have had a website, an email address for people to provide comments along with that public hearing. So we've taken some public input on our options for the Anne and Urban intersection and also what that corridor typical section could look like. And it was summarized in here, Stonebrook and Moore put together a summary of. Input that was given and a recommendation. And so that recommendation, the biggest, most interesting part is the Anne and Urban intersection is the recommendation. Is the recommendation is is for a roundabout. The corridor itself, the typical section is an urban section with a trail on one side. We're still going through the, we just kind of got the typical section. Moved today and what we're going to do there. It'll be very much the same as what the city section, I'm sorry, that's our section, but what the city reconstructed for us. A few years back in the south of thirtieth street, so it'll be the same width. So it'll be the very similar to what's out there right now. Does allow some future different configurations, like a center left turn lane potentially down the road, but. So I guess this was a. More of an update for the board, in case you had any questions. Thoughts, concerns with what our project is.
Mister Chair, I'd just like to comment that I thought that when I read through it, I was very impressed that the. The input was actually received and modifications were made and like a mobile home. Park there that was concerned about being able to to get mobile homes transported in and out. Through the roundabout and by making some changes on the drivable and drivable curbs or something that that they would be able to actually drive over them with the the bigger. Turns and things that they would need to make and just to, that was nice that they respected. The input then and actually made the modifications and looks like a good open, the only thing I was. It looked like it was the most expensive outcome as well, million three or something like that. Can we get any highway safety improvement, project dollars for that or?
It's on that list of that federal. There, but it does not have a. In our regular highway safety.
Kind of ask.
Mister Chair, I was also impressed with the fact that this is one of the first times that I've read. Where they've had a, there's been a open house or hearing and then they've made those corrections and it was, it was. I think all of us probably felt that it was kind of a nice thing to do.
Yeah, a little more on that, you know, this. We had initially looked at that intersection and did the intersection control evaluation. And it came back, it can be a roundabout, it can be a signal. Mini roundabout was an option and it was. They both have their pros and cons and and there was real no standout. You know, this is what we need to have for any reason, and so for me, it was, this was an easy one to put to the public and say, hey, what do you want? Because I wasn't sitting there saying, you know, pushing anything, it's, all right, let's see what the public wanted, and so it was nice to be able to. Get that input to now have the public. Support with it, and yeah, having that first meeting with the businesses was very beneficial, like you say, motor, mobile home. Sonics gas station, just all the turning movements, checked with like maybe for the materials because they're taking their. Long equipment across Dan Street to their yard. And Bemidji Avenue there, so there's a lot of those, you know, things that go into into play of just the preliminary design of it. And now we get into the details of. Specific items of the roundabout, but just to look at those general bigger ticket items to make sure that those businesses and the big, you know, users are. It's going to be user friendly is very, very helpful.
So is this an another item for a nod?
I don't even need a nod, this one was more informational for you. The next one, I'll need a nod one way or the other on. So here, the next, the third item is Eland Township Sunny Beach Road. And I need you to take off your county commissioner hat and put on your Eland Township hat. Eland Township is an unorganized township, and so then it falls to the county responsibility. And Eland Township has roughly eight miles of road, Sunny Beach is one mile such. And it is on the county line with Washkis Township. We. Have been. Sorry, we as Eland Township has been maintaining that one mile section of road hundred percent. At even township cost. Normally, the township roads, even county roads, but roads that are on a town line. Those costs are shared, there's some type of agreement with the joining township, splitting costs with fifty or you each maintain. You know, half mile, half mile, or whatever it be, there's some type of agreement, but. For whatever reason, from two thousand and ten was the the one map I could find in the list. That even township's been paying for everything there a hundred percent, there was a map prior, it wasn't dated, but prior, it did show that at one point Washkis was. It was like half and half, so I'm not sure when or how it was changed, but. Part of the issue is right now, even township, first I'll back up, what brought it to light. It really put a spotlight on it is Sunny Beach Road fell apart this spring in the flood. Eye water came up, inundated the road, saturated the road, and it just it fell apart and there was traffic could not get through. We have hauled many, many, many loads of large crushed rock. Dumped into the soft spots to try to help carry the traffic and. It had the road closed sign up and my understanding is it's finally going to go down tomorrow. They've been able to get through with four wheel drive vehicles and. But it's been a been a bear this spring, so it kind of put a spotlight on the road, it's like, oh, you know, why is even township having to cover all of these costs? And especially since even township. Township is unable to pay for all of its road maintenance over the years, it has had to borrow money from other unorganized townships. And so right now, it's Jody keeps track of it, but it's in the hole like seventy five thousand dollars that it's had to borrow from other townships. So. To me, it just again kind of puts another spotlight on it, why is there a hundred percent of the cost even township? And so I guess my request is. That we look at some type of shared jurisdiction. Open up the dialogue with Washkis Township and see how they would like to address it or approach it. But I think some type of shared cost is in the best interest of even township. It adds to it, I mean, I would think or hope that Washkis could take a hundred percent of the cost because. The majority of the users are Washkis Township residents, there's only one private. Parcel along Sunny Beach Road and it's a rice paddy, no one living there, but there's all the traffic is. Lake Shore Residential in Washka Township and Shotley Township. So those are the main users for that that road, so, you know, maybe Washkis will want to take better care of it than even township will want to take care of it, but. I guess at this point, I'm just asking if it's worthy of opening up that dialogue with Washkis Township to see if they're. We can negotiate some type of cost share for that road.
It makes sense to me.
And see what, if you said any conversations about it or?
No, I actually haven't, this is the first that I've heard of it as well. Well, I I guess I would be in support of opening, you know, a conversation. But and and, you know, make a decision there. I guess it wouldn't hurt to. To have a conversation. But I, you know, I guess some of my concerns are, you know, how much is this going to cost? Our Washkis Township, how much, how much is this going to cost? Eland Township. You know, so I guess we probably can't get those. Questions answered until we have a a conversation, so.
And Mister Chair, they they would have to. I mean, they would have to accept the road, right? I mean, it's it's they would have to voluntarily.
No, no, it's a. State statute that you share roads.
Okay.
But how that agreement is drafted, that's, I'm going to say the negotiation part.
Okay, okay.
The township association has a. A nice website, and they have an example, town, shared town line road. It's different ways of either sharing costs or sharing mileage. They have a sample document that's out there.
Town board for twelve years prior to being commissioner, and we had one shared road with Taglight Township and and the way we did it, we just, you know. We took care of the entire road in the winter and they did, and they took care of it in the summer, you know, following it in the winter and grading it in the summer and. And that can be as simple as that, or it can be just, you know, tally up the bill at the end of the year and split it.
And we did the same thing with in some of our townships where. When it's gravel, which is more expensive, then they share that fifty fifty, but otherwise they broke it according to the weather. So that'll, it'll be an interesting discussion.
Part of consensus to have a discussion.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. That's all I have.
Administrators update.
Yeah, we did.
I don't remember that email. Can can you remind us?
Oh, that email, yeah, yeah, yeah.
August sixteenth and October fourth. Okay.
It's on the be safe on Lexico.
What a reason. Goodness sakes, too bad we can't go right into the regular media.
Yeah, yeah, well, this is just, we're just too efficient here.
Well, I guess we will adjourn until five o'clock.
Alright.
I'll uh, I'll be part of the region.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, I'll skip the general comments, I guess, probably the least amount of uh, people we've had at one of our meetings.
I don't know that I've ever seen of this.
I mean, it's because surely it's because everybody is happy with everything that we're doing and there's just no.
So with that said, I won't forego the citizens' addresses aboard and let there's somebody online. Okay, so I'll ask for motion to approve the agenda. Chair, I have one consent agenda item, the county board approval of the resolution agreement requesting mediation with VHS by this Friday. I have a motion by Commissioner Anderson as our second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Olson, any further discussion?
If not, I'll call for the board, all those favors in the five percent, aye?
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Motion for, for the approval of the consent agenda.
And make a motion when you approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yeah, motion by Commissioner Gosbik is our second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Olson, any further discussion? And I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, signify percent, aye?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Seeing that we have no uh, regular agenda items, we will move on to commissioners' business items, legislative and lobbying issues.
After me. I have one quick thing I want to say, and, oh, two things. One, uh, my nonprofit organization that I work for, the Nameless Coalition for the Homeless, is going to be having a pig roast fundraiser on Friday. We're roasting a pig and having pork sandwiches, um, trying to raise some money to redo the parking lot and the uh, event will be in the parking lot so that everybody can see why it is that we're doing the fundraiser. And that is at the old Upper Mississippi Health Center, uh, 722 15th Street Northwest here in Bemidji. And then the second item that I wanted to quickly mention is, and I don't know if I, I should have said this at the uh, beginning of the identifying future work topics, but I got a phone call from someone, uh, from a logger, from Echols, uh, that really would like to see the position, that office position in the Natural Resource Management Office, the, the receptionist position be made back into a full-time position. And, uh, we had talked about that in the budget process a year ago, or last, last cycle. And, um, for those of you that are going to be on the, on the budget committee, I know it won't be me, um, so I would just encourage you guys to really take a good look at that. And I'll maybe try and reach out to, um, some other loggers to get, to get more, uh, support for, for making that position full-time again, as it used to be. So that's all that I got. Thank you.
My line, thanks.
Uh, Commissioner's report?
Oh, that was my commissioner's report.
Well, uh, for me, I just want to remind, mind you that AMC District Two meeting will be taking place next Wednesday, um, here at eight o'clock. Okay.
Oh, that was the other item. I am not going to be here for the, um, June, sorry, July 5th board meeting. I will be absent, I'll be out of town. So, put all the stuff that I didn't want to support on the agenda that night.
So that is my report. And upcoming meeting schedule.
I've got a couple of things on the commissioner's report, sir. The jail finance committee, we had a meeting, um, and the biggest thing that came out of that was a little bit of concern over the rising interest rates, uh, you know, the more their interest rates go up, the less our money can, can buy. Airport authority, I did get sworn in and, in place of Reed on the airport authority board. And then I also attended the law enforcement memorial, memorial service on May 19th, so, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Gosbik. All right. Motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Olson, any further discussion? Not a call for the board, all those favors in the purpose, and I.
Aye.
Post.
No.